This conference will now be recorded.
Everybody else in the world had an appointment for two o'clock.
I just, I just went to HEB and I got the coupon. If you bought a hundred dollars worth of groceries, you got a vaccination. So it was a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
I thought that was an urban myth. I didn't realize that was real.
CVS is offering them now and, and other places. I just saw, I just saw a deal where if you want to go to the Speedway, you know, the Formula One place, going to be giving drive-through.
Yeah. They had lots of shots that needed to be given and not enough people lined up.
That's it.
Well, some people don't want to take the vaccination.
Yep.
One of my close friends.
Right.
Well, and now that they've opened it up to people 16 and older, and we have a whole crew of young people that are about to graduate or do summer jobs, you know, if, if their parents are or if they are of the mind to get the vaccination, I think it's a good thing. We're about to have graduation parties and proms and all of that business.
Maybe they ought to show up at the high school.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock and I want to welcome everyone to a special call meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista, Texas. And like to introduce those individuals. This evening, the commissioners are Charles Solomon and Don Jandro, Larry Hagler, Tom Monahan, our vice chair. My name's Gary Zaleski, your Lago Vista, Texas Planning and Zoning Commissioner and Chairman of this esteemed group. I did receive notice from Julie Davis. She's having a conflict with trying to attend this evening and I don't see Richard Brown. Was anybody contacted that Richard Brown would be unable to attend? I guess not. So we'll try to muddle along without him. In addition, we have Roy Jamboor, our Director of Development for Lago Vista, our city attorney, Aaron Silveira, and our city council liaison, David Williams. The citizen comments for non-agenda items, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses of items not on the agenda. So are, at this point, are there any citizen comments for any non-agenda items?
Richard?
Nope. I, it's going back through some of the minutes and I'm going to try to leave sufficient time because I see that we've ended a particular session or we've closed the public comments and we've moved on to discussions and have not been able, other people wanted to speak. So I just want to make sure, I'll give sufficient time to see if anybody is recognized and does want to speak. So, don't believe there's any citizen comments for non-agenda items. If that's the case, we'll move on to our public hearing. And public hearing, we, for this special meeting, we only have one and that is 21-1758-r-rez. The consideration of a recommendation regarding zoning district change from the planned development district previously known as Sunset Harbor PDD to the R1T Single Family Tall Residential District for the property legally described as Lot 6, Lot 7, and Lot 8 of Canyon Oak Subdivision of Lot 3M of Lago Vista Travis Plaza, save and accept 75 by 85 feet of said lot, 4M of Lago Vista Travis Plaza subdivision. And Roy, if I could, would you please go ahead and, and fill us in on the staff report?
Yes, sir. Unless you have any questions or see a need for me to, you know, go back and summarize things that happened before, I would tend to limit my comments to why we're here tonight and what, what has happened since you guys considered this previously. We discovered an error in the contact information and the methodology that we use to contact the owners of the condominiums that were across the street that were within the 200-foot notification boundary. In an abundance of caution, we not only sent out letters to each individual property owner, we did it for the, everything we had for the burned-out condominiums located on the other side of Lago Vista Way. It did not yield. We, we did get new responses. Most of them were replacement for people who had already responded previously. We did get one additional one. It wasn't actually on a proper response form, but it was a lady who did in fact buy an interest in one of those burned-out condo units. And I believe you have her email at the very end of your package. That was the only new comment we, we received. And unless you have any particular questions about what happened, I'm not sure there's anything more I can add that I haven't already said.
Tom, you have a question or comment for Roy?
So Roy, we heard this, well, back in January or February, whenever it was, approved it. And so we're basically just, this is just a redo based on the technicality of public notice. So we've approved it once and so doing it again. So.
You know, although it has nothing to do with this application, we were glad to hear from one of the owners of that condo. And we may try and facilitate clearing up the title on all that. But, you know, so it did, that might happen and that might be a good thing. But, you know, regardless of how valid or invalid that lady's comment was, at least we know how to get over it now. And that might help.
Just going over some of the history of this piece of property from Camille Court, the dead end and the gate and over there on, what is it, Lago Vista Way, I believe, where the other entrance is. It's probably a moot point at this time, but I really think that, you know, we, we need to have access to the property. And fortunately for myself, been on the Planning and Zoning Commission long enough, goes way back to some time when that area is going to be developed for a couple of different reasons. And they were going to change, make some changes to the PDD. Anyway, I don't know feelings of the other commissioners, but I really think we need access to the property so we can get a fair, I don't know, perception of exactly, you know, what's going on. And, you know, I'll just mention that at the end of Camille Court where that gate is, you know, with the lock on it, I remember years ago, it just, it had a lock, but the lock was just hanging loose and you could walk back there. The sign that refers you to a Jeff Dolan at a Houston telephone number, you know, says, it's been there about 20 years, best I can tell, that same sign that's on that gate. But I'd just be interested to know what the other commissioners think about Planning and Zoning Commission members having access. I know we need to look at those height restrictions, but I think something like this as well, that we need to have a firsthand look at the property itself. So anyway, I'd be interested if anybody had a comment. I guess not. All right.
I have a comment.
Oh, Richard Brown has joined the, joined the party. Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, yes.
I had a.
And your comment?
Spectrum and I did not see eye to eye. I agree with you about how essential it is for us to have access to property about which we need to make decisions. I, I think it's essential. And this particular property, I have tried to approach from the top and it gets treacherous fast. And I, I would really like to have had a good enough view of it. And, and also I would have liked to have had a sense of where the homes would be built, just from the standpoint of looking at the impact of the 35-foot height limit. I do know that they already have that right, but I would have liked to have seen it for my own eyes anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Did any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for the staff? If not, then we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation.
Yes, sir. My name's Sam Walker and I'm with Eckerman Engineering. Thank you for having us tonight and thank y'all for coming in on a special meeting. Sorry, we're back here again. But as you heard last month, and as Roy stated, I guess I'll try to keep my comments short unless somebody has a specific question. As you know, this is currently zoned as the Sunset Harbor PDD, which has an underlying zoning district of the R1T. Some additions to that that PDD allowed was some multifamily condos, up to 45 residences, and a 50-foot boat with a clubhouse. As part of this, what we're asking to do is Mr. Atwood and Mr. Reed, the two owners, had wanted to put some personal residences on there. Mr. Atwood says he wants to put one home on Lot 8, one home on Lot 7 for one of his friends. And then he's not sure what he'll do with the remainder, Lot 6 and 3M and 4M. But then also Mr. Reed wants to put up to two homes on that two acres. So very less dense development than what's currently allowed. And like I said, unless y'all have other questions, I'll keep it short and appreciate y'all's time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. You have any idea who Jeff Dolan is?
I do not, no, sir. And as regarding the access, I think we would have been very open to anybody coming out. I didn't know that was a concern until a few minutes ago. So sorry about that.
Well.
But no, I've not heard of Jeff Dolan. I believe Mr. Reed owned this property prior to Mr. Atwood purchasing a big portion of it from him.
All right. Yes, Don, you have a question for the applicant?
I just want to make a statement that I agree with, with you all that it would be wise for us to be able to have access to it. And I don't believe that the residents of Camille would be, would object to our going through that gate, if we can figure out a way to go, go through it. The, the main, the main thing that we want to emphasize, or I think they would like to emphasize to Sam, is that, you know, they don't probably mind being an emergency exit, but they would certainly rather you have an entrance and ingress in another place.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've heard their comments and plan to likely come in on Country Club Drive. I will be honest with you, no plans have actually been developed at this point. We would have to do that when the subdivision and the building plans come through. But that is my understanding. Mr. Atwood probably would want to keep the Camille Court as emergency only and then utilize Country Club. One, because it's only his residence and one of his friends on that end. So you're looking, you're talking about two access points and they don't want people coming back and forth in front of their home either. So, yes, sir. Does that help or?
It does. Thank you.
Richard?
Jeff Dolan has a long and colorful history with that property. He had a very ambitious development plan for that property and some additional lots across Dawn Drive where it kind of bends around toward, to go down toward the Marina. And his development plans did not work out with the city. He had, he, he felt that he had a grievance and I can remember him attending city council meetings month after month after month in order to reiterate his, his grievance about, about that issue. But in any case, he, he may have never actually had title. He may have only had an option on that property, but I do know that he had a very large development plan for that, for that project and some other project over the hump across Dawn.
So his name lives in memoriam on the sign along with.
Yes.
Do you think that's the correct phone number? Should we all try to give him a call tonight?
I don't know.
3:00 AM? So he does not, he no longer owns any of that property. He just has a sign out there. I'm surprised some of the Camille Court people haven't taken that sign down. Any other, either questions or comments from the commissioners to the applicant? All right. If that's the case, then I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:17. And I'd just like to, once again, make a note that, you know, try to keep your, for the public that would like to speak, try to keep your comments within a three to five minute timeframe. So is there anybody that would like to speak during the open public hearing? I see a gentleman with his hand up. Ed Phipps?
Yep. Um, so I live on Camille Court and I just took the action to take that sign down for you guys. It'll be taken down, it'll be taken down tomorrow. But, but let's not make that part of the record of the meeting. Um, when you guys, so the other thing is, we're pretty opinionated, as you guys know, about not opening up Camille Court as through traffic into this subdivision. You guys know that. Don, you came back and reiterated that. Sam, you talked about, yep, we're gonna, you know, we think that we want to keep the entry on Country Club. That's all good. So I'm not going to belabor that. Or the amount of times that that circle has been hit by trucks and rocks knocked down and insurance companies and all that kind of stuff. I do have a question. When we're talking about putting a home on Lot 7 and 8, when I look at the plat map, is, are those lots outside of this lined-in area? Where, where are those lots? Where are those, Mr. Atwood's going to put his home?
Mr. Jamboor, you want to answer that or Mr. Walker?
I can take a shot at it. Lot 7 and 8 are the two most northern lots along the lake. They're roughly seven acres each. So we're talking about, about a 15-acre area for two homes. They are the ones, Lot 8 abuts the end of Lake Shore Drive and Camille Court. And then Lot 7 is between where it comes out and touches Country Club Drive and then that Lot 8. Is that, does that help you at all?
Yeah, that, that does. That does. So, okay. So access to those lots would be how then?
So he also owns Lot 3M and 4M, which abut Country Club Drive. And likely we would come in that way, head down the hill and access those two homes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, the other thing is, I was reading through a lot of the public notice and things like that. I saw a reference to Dark Sky Initiative. And that was probably my comment to you guys. And the only thing I would ask is that anything we do from a development point of view in this big lot, that we observe the Dark Sky Initiative, or we put it in there so that the development has to do that, so we don't end up with light pollution, lights pointing up into the sky and that kind of thing in this area. That's my ask.
It's a part of the code of ordinances.
Yeah.
Is it on, we enforce it on all new construction. There is a sunset clause for existing construction that hasn't kicked in yet.
Okay, understand. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else that would like to speak during the public meeting, public hearing? Going to give it a second or two. Don't really see anyone else. So we'll close the public hearing at 7:21. And open it up for any further discussion. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like some clarification about the right of the developer with regard to Camille Court. And I, I know about the preferences for those people who currently live there. But it seems as though, when I look at some of the engineering drawings for that area, that it was envisioned that Camille Court could, should, or might be extended across this subject property and maybe extend all the way up to Lago Vista Way. And it seems to me that because Camille Court is a public street and that the way it terminates is not necessarily what the public might want compared to what the residents of Camille Court might want, and what the developer might want compared to what the residents of Camille Court might want. It seems to me, from looking at the documents, that the developer should have the right to extend Camille Court across his property and use it for access in almost any way he might wish that a public street might otherwise be used. I have no idea if that's his plan, but I do think it's his right and I think it should be part of the record.
In the Roy or possibly Aaron, could you read, respond to that? You know, I was reading, Roy, kind of some of the things that you had in there and I, I thought it did allude somewhat to, maybe there was a cul-de-sac or it went further beyond where that gate is at Camille Court?
There, there is a cul-de-sac that's platted. It is very curious, and Mr. Walker may have done research on this. I have not. For some reason, it doesn't line up exactly with the existing Camille Court right-of-way. It's offset a little bit. I don't know what that's about. It may simply be that the way it was platted didn't match what was surveyed on the ground. I have no idea. Nonetheless, you know, one of the reasons in this, for those of you who were around for the Sunset Arbor discussion, one of the biggest impediments about the use of Camille Court is the fact that the improvements that are already in that existing right-of-way don't meet city standards. And in order for somebody to use that, they're going to have to go back and make those corrections. And those are probably going to be cost prohibitive compared to other access points. But ultimately, the real answer tonight is that that is something that you will discuss when the plat is brought to you. This is simply the base zoning change. So, you know, all of these questions and discussions about what may or may not be the best way are probably going to come back, but just, it's just an aside, the fact that that's what makes Camille Court impractical. And, and the same way, I mean, in, in theory, Lake Shore Boulevard or Lake Shore Drive would be usable, except for the fact that you've got a fortune to spend on moving some, some, you know, lift stations and things like that out of the way. The, the street on the other side, Seminole Drive, that would be real great, except for the half a million dollars you'd probably spend on retaining walls and cut and fill to make it usable. So, and the other thing I would add to this equation, which again, is not really part of your decision-making tonight, is that there's a property owner that owns a piece of Lot 3M that's landlocked. And whenever you have a new plat, we're going to be obligated to resolve that somehow. And in all likelihood, that's, you know, part of the, the most likely solution. That, that's what was concluded when they did the PDD before. I, I can't imagine that it, that, that, that answer would change.
Thank you very much, Roy. Any, any further discussion at this point? I'm trying to watch. Tom, I, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was just commenting that, you know, we, we approved this earlier this year and I think it was unanimous. And I personally don't see what, anything new has been presented to us that would change our minds. So I'm, if we were just to vote in favor, but again.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All right. Then I'll make a motion that item number one of the special meeting, 21-1758-r-rez, that the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista recommends to the city council the, this planned development district previously known as Sunset Harbor PDD to the R1T Single Family Tall Residential District for the property legally described as Lot 6, 7, and 8 of Canyon Oak Subdivision, and Lot 3M of Lago Vista Travis Plaza, save and accept 75 and 85 feet of said lot, and Lot 4M of Lago Vista Travis Plaza subdivision. Might there be a second if that motion is satisfactory? And who, Richard? All right. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a comment. I have a comment. I, I hope that Mr. Walker and the developers will come up with a lane, a name for this development. for this development that's a lot shorter than the legal description that you just had to read.
Yes, sir.
Well, maybe not. Next time, maybe I can ask Mr. Brown to read the motion. Anyway, so moved and seconded. I don't see any further discussion. And I'll just go through. Charles, how do you vote?
Aye. Yes.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Mr. Jondro?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
His mouth said aye.
Aye, aye.
Maybe that's a poster. Oh, I see. And Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
And chair of votes, unanimous. The motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
We can now move on to our second business item. And any, you're more than welcome, Mr. Walker. Our council liaison, David, did you have any words of wisdom for us this evening?
No words of wisdom tonight.
All right, all right. Stay off the ice.
Yes.
And moving on to the consent agenda, once again, I would like to, Roy, are we thanking the right person? Is Alice Drake the person who is poring over these minutes and?
Yes, sir.
Having to?
We started to take it very seriously, I can tell you that.
I'll say. So I hope everybody took the time and for your reading enjoyment, were able to read the minutes. So the consent agenda that all matters listed in the consent agenda are to be considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So item three, considering the approval of the minutes of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one of that special called meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion, yeah, that we have, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for the minutes for January.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor, just kind of raise your hand up on the screen, and I can tabulate. The minutes have passed unanimously. All right, thank you. And if we could move on to any future agenda items that you would like to discuss this evening? Well, that takes care of that.
I think, I think Mr. Williams has one he's forgetting about.
I didn't forget, but you know, the, next month, if your next meeting, I would like to present the comprehensive plan, action plan for you, for you two.
Oh, very good.
Yes.
Oh, you were just going away and not mention that until the last second and just surprise us with that announcement, huh?
Well, I mentioned it at the last meeting, so I figured I didn't need to mention it again. So, you know, you just, you're supposed to read the.
We knew the bomb was coming. We just didn't know when it was going to arrive.
Well, it's going to arrive next meeting.
Okay.
So our next meeting is a regular meeting, is on the thirteenth. It occurred to me that Friday, the thirteenth, falls on a Thursday next month, and it'll be interesting. So if there isn't anything else, it is now seven thirty-three, and we are adjourned.
Have a great one. Goodbye, all.